Hello and good evening. Welcome to the Wakefield School Committee meeting of Tuesday, February 11, 2025. We'll call the meeting to order. We have just left our executive session and now we're returning into our public session. We will start every meeting as we always do with our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And moving on via reading of our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing a rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. At this point in the meeting, we would make time for public comment. No one in the studio? Do we have anyone online? And we have no one there as well. We were not able to be joined by our youth advisors this evening. They are all otherwise engaged in their extracurriculars, and we wish them all luck. Moving on to item number seven, I believe we have a contested agenda.
Move that the school committee accept the minutes of the January 17, 2024, policy and communications meeting as presented and the January 27, 2025, policy and communications meeting as presented.
Second, just a correction, there's a typo on that, it's 25.
You're right, January 17, 2025.
Second. Understood. Motions made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? And that is unanimous. Six of us voting because Ms. Collarin is not able to make it this evening. Moving on to budget items, Ms. Befagni.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have the financial reports from July 1, 2024, to January 31, 2025. We're more than halfway through this fiscal year, which is quite amazing. We have an available balance of just over 5% remaining. That encumbers all of our payrolls for the rest of the year, but we still have some spending to do. But we have decided at the end of this month to do a budget freeze in Wakefield to kind of look at where our spending has been going for this year in anticipation for the budget that we're preparing for you that we'll be presenting in March. So that's the local budget. And then you'll see from the grants, we only have about $200. We have about $200,000 remaining. That is particularly the Metco grant, which is our state grant for that program, has an available balance. The rest is pretty much encumbered. The last page is the revolving accounts, which you can see from this time at last year has had a considerable decrease. We have our four-year spending plan in place and we're pretty much on track for where we want to go with those accounts. Circuit breaker, as I'll remind you, is not a revolving account. It's a special revenue account. But you can see we've received two of our four revenue payments for that account. So that helps us pay for our out-of-district tuition costs. So that's pretty much on target for where we expect. I'll take any questions at this time? Anyone has any? Melissa?
When you say a spending freeze, is that also a hiring freeze or is that just...
No, this is for non-salary accounts. So it's not for any stipends. Of course, if we had a resignation, a classroom teacher, or anything like that, we would, of course, post. If we're covering for a maternity leave, again, we would look for a long-term sub. This is for non-salary items that, at this time of year, we're just kind of looking, assessing how our spending has been and trying to forecast for the next couple of months and for the beginning of next year.
Agreed.
And then we have three payrolls in January. I believe we have a motion?
Yep, move that the school committee approve payroll warrants 28, 30, and 32 as presented.
Second. Motions made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Thank you.
No gifts, so that was it.
All right. Thank you. Start the lines.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Ingles. Just a quick update. So the SEEM Annual Report is in your packet. It is informational. We include it every year as part of our practice, right? We are a member of SEEM Collaborative. And as a member district, we get certain kind of, a certain advantage in that when our kind of rate in kind of being a member is lower than other districts and our tuition is slightly lower than other districts as well. SEEM Collaborative has been in place since 1969. It was created to house and foster the development of low-incident programs. So for example, if we have students in district where there are one or two students where it's difficult to serve or provide the support that the specific students need, the collaborative has banded together with 12 districts that are partner members to create six programs as part of their nuclear kind of program offerings, right? They are one for deaf and hard-of-hearing programs, there's a therapeutic learning program, there's a SEEM prep program, there's an elementary program at Hurd. They call it Hurd, not Heard Elementary here. It used to be here in Wakefield. It's now in Melrose, but they still call it Hurd. And so there's a middle school program, and then there's a campus academy alternative high school program as well. And so those programs have not changed for a number of years. What has changed at SEEM is the district-based services that they have started to offer member districts. And that is in the area of applied technology, auditory support, applied behavioral analysis. And one of the biggest areas that has really been helpful is the SEEM Assessment Center. If you need to get an assessment done quickly or you have a lot of unanswered questions with a particular student or a difficult case, I think they've been very helpful and supportive to districts where students can be tested in an alternative setting to really kind of bring down the temperature and really support them to get the best results to then create services to help them. They also provide district-based services in regard to, they will consult on behavior and a number of different things as well. That include, they provide home tutoring as well as different types of coaching. And they have affinity groups where special education directors get together there and they offer professional development as well. So all of the other information is included in the annual report. No dramatic changes in the report to share. The member districts are Linfield, Melrose, North Andover, North Redding, Redding, Saugus, Stonem, Wakefield, Wilmington, Winchester, and Woobert, right? And so the budget is also in there. Annually, collaboratives are required to be audited. And so also in this annual report, you'll see that there's information here that they have successfully completed their annual audit and they are on track. They are slight, they're just at kind of where they were last year in terms of the number of students that they're supporting, which is in the mid-300s. That does not take into account students that are being served in kind of a rotating basis through, let's say, their assessment center, right? That's more information that we don't have in the annual report, but I think we should include next year because I think it's been very helpful to all of the member districts and especially to Wakefield. So that's where we're at there. I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Maybe just to reiterate, you told us last year that being a member district, we save a significant amount of money in sending students there. So that's something maybe to just reiterate again this year.
Correct. And so other districts can send children there, but the tuition they pay is higher. So to be a member district, I want to say we pay $5,500 with our other member districts. And tuition is discounted slightly compared to non-member districts.
And then my other one was, I think the Andor report got missed from the packets. Have we just added to the one in two weeks? At least I didn't see it. Did you?
It was sent as a separate task.
Okay, perfect, as long as we haven't.
Yep.
I have the packet up and I think it's part of the packet.
It may have been the last final edit.
Okay.
Okay. And if you don't have...
It's not in the packet that's called Final Packet.
Okay, it might be in the packet that's not called Final Packet.
Well, that could be.
I only opened the one called Final Packet.
I'll be happy to provide that.
Awesome, thank you.
I'll be happy to provide that. Yeah. Again, that's informational, happy.
My assumption is another benefit from this sort of non-monotarily is that we can forecast better for what our needs might be for our sort of out-of-district students by collaborating with the other towns and seeing sort of, you know, if there are any bellwethers in terms of like best practice and sort of where to sort of put our, any resources that we might have to keep things in district versus out of district. I think SEEM is a nice backstop for that and collaboration.
I think they often are. I think you're spot on. I think that, you know, some of the challenges are, you know, complex cases where there's, you know, we're seeing, you know, needs that are changing dramatically and a complexity of needs within individual cases. So, you know, they are kind of a great group for us to kind of be thought partners with. We often kind of will check in with them and talk about, you know, we are trying to meet the needs of a student or trying to create something that changes in a program. We will often go to them and share and get feedback, so yes.
Yeah, that's great. Good to be a part of it.
Yeah, no, I think it's really been great for us. Really appreciate what they have to offer. Next up is our science curriculum.
You're up.
Taking while everyone's getting settled. So tonight, we have our science curriculum coordinator, Joanne Marks. She's our 5-12 science curriculum coordinator. We have Dr. John Hanren, who is our department coordinator at the high school, and Chris Korski, who is our curriculum liaison at the middle school. So I think you probably recall from our curriculum structure that we shared with you, Chris and John teach as well and then hold position of curriculum liaison and department coordinator and work in collaboration with Joanne across the district. And I just wanted to thank, before they get started with this slideshow, John, Joanne, Chris, as well as the entire 5-12 science department. This has been a really thorough, extensive process that you probably recall last spring that we extended just to, you know, make sure that we were doing our due diligence and collaborating and working well as a department to come to some strong recommendations. So I know it's been a lot and I just want to thank you all for your hard work. And I also wanted to bring up, I think Joanne will touch on it too, that, just a reminder about the elementary review from this break as well.
I'll start with that.
I'll pass it on to Joanne.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. I am excited to be joined tonight by two of the great science teachers on our team. For our review tonight, we're going to be focusing on the middle school and the high school and our curriculum review with that. As you may recall, we did present in May of last year about the elementary updates. Kind of the quick summary of that is that the element, the K-4 science teacher team is using mystery science as a base for their lesson resources. They, a lot of their curriculum review work and continuing into the summer, last summer, was developing a scope and sequence that aligned the science content to the nonfiction content in the new EL program. There's a really strong nonfiction component to the literacy program. And so really figuring out what science content is being taught in the literacy and making sure that the science curriculum supported that and didn't repeat that. And that was a nice chance to really align our work. Incorporating phenomena into their units and really ensuring, and I think we're really proud of, the consistent experience that the elementary folks, students are getting, K-4. And that's given the constraints within the model that we have, right? I think our model is admired by many districts because we have consistent access on a regular basis for all students to science at the elementary school. And at the same time, is challenging in that it's never enough time to do all that we want to. And so finding a balance between those two things has been their work. And they've really, I thought, think, worked to make that even more in-depth and consistent this year. So that's kind of the quick elementary summary that was presented last May. Cara did share some of the questions that came up prior to the, after sharing the slides. And so I'm going to try to incorporate those into my comments tonight. And of course, we'll take questions at the end. All right, so why set off into a curriculum review? Really, our goal in this whole process is to set out to see, is what we're doing working? Are students learning? Modeling that against or framing that against current practices, understanding what current practices in education are and how does that connect with what we're doing? And then moving forward, what are we going to do? How are we going to do it? And how will we know when we've accomplished it? So this has been a really long and thoughtful, extensive process. We've had a really dedicated team working on this over the last couple of years. We started in spring of 2023. We had family surveys, we looked at a lot of data. And so this is, we've moved a lot past that data piece, but just to reference that, we did dig into all of that. Some of the key takeaways at that time, we know that demographics in Wakefield are changing. We know a lot from the family surveys and the student surveys that, and teachers want, we want kids to be hands-on and learning. We want relevant application to the topics of the topics that we're studying. As far as achievement in science, in Wakefield, it's been steady, but not improving and not decreasing, right? So I think it's been fine. I think we also know we can do better. And so we always seek to improve and to improve our practice. And then finally, the curriculum that we've been using is really inconsistent when you look at the big picture. And so part of our focus has been on refining that moving forward. So as far as just some background in science education and what we know now and a little bit of history, right? All of the work that we've been doing fits into the greater context of what's happening in the world of science education. So most notably, there was a major shift in 2013. So what's listed there as the NGSS stands for the Next Generation Science Standards. These were national standards that were produced by, I mean, it was in conjunction with National Science Teachers Association and many professors in science, and there was the NSF. Like, there was a lot, a big organization that put together the NGSS science standards. Massachusetts then adapted them. They did not full-on adopt the NGSS, but they adapted them. They're very slightly changed. So, but that was in 2016 that Massachusetts released their version. Those are our state standards. And while there are some slight changes and slight details that we need to be aware of them being different from the NGSS, in heart and in soul, they are the same, right? They have the same drive. So it was around that same time that in 2017, Wakefield really looked at, okay, the state has new standards. We need to shift what we're doing. We need to make sure we're matching the standards. And so at that point in 2017 is when we adopted McGraw-Hill at the middle school and grade nine. And that really has been, and there was also a lot of work at that time of teachers digging into the content to make sure that we were aligned to the new standards. So that's what we had been doing. And then bringing us into 2023, where we started our review and then looking ahead to see where we're going. So as part of that framework shift, essentially what was done in the Next Generation Science Standards, so at the national level, but also very much in the Massachusetts standards, right? So in those Massachusetts standards from 20, our first ones, or earlier ones, were in 2006. There was a big shift in kind of three areas. One is to de-emphasize memorizing facts and content and to emphasize offering that content within the relevant application, within context. That's often, and I'll use the word later on, often referred to in this, the lingo being phenomena or studying a phenomenon. Then there's also this idea of you're not just learning content, which in this case is called the disciplinary core ideas. That's like the core content. But you're also doing that as it is integrated within the science and engineering practices, like the skills of science, questioning, investigating, all those pieces. So that they're not just learning them separately, that you are learning them together. And then finally, this concept that we're really not looking to just target students who are interested in STEM, but we're really looking to elevate and challenge all students, right? K-12. So that was a shift. And I tried to, that was the shift. If we put this in kind of picture format. So on the left here, you have kind of the traditional approach to science, which is how I learned science for most of my life and likely how you also were schooled in science. And this is, it's nothing necessarily wrong with this, right? This is the content-centered way of learning science. So the idea being, we've got a teacher, okay, we're going to be learning about Newton's laws. That's our new unit. We do some cool demos. We learn the science. And students are really driven to understand, but also know that they're going to be assessed on this, okay? I need to know this. I have to remember this for the test. And so in this traditional approach, you have the teacher presenting new ideas. They're getting, the teacher's giving examples. The students are doing labs, they're doing activities, they're doing... And then maybe they circle back and there's a new idea. And then they do examples, and they do an activity, and then they do a new idea. And you do that, and then eventually you assess that content. And again, that's what I grew up with, learning science. What the NGSS or what the new Massachusetts State Standards suggest is that we're leading students to figure out science. We're not just telling it to them. And so the premise here is instead of saying, all right, we're going to learn about our next unit's on Newton's laws, we're saying, hey, look at this cracked cellphone. Why do you think sometimes things get damaged when they collide, when they hit each other? And students from the start are led to wonder, why is this happening? I wonder how we could figure that out. And we're tapping into their natural curiosity that we know all, everyone has, right? And so this new approach in the standards is really presenting things in that way. And so instead of the earlier traditional sequence, you start with what's referred to as an anchor phenomenon. And truly, it can be a really quick event. It could be an experience. It's maybe shown with a video. Like, it's some example of real-life, relevant scenario that students are asked to wonder about. And that usually, it's really quite complex where there might be an easy answer, but that's not the full answer. That really to explain an anchor phenomenon, you have to unpack layers and layers of science. And so we start the unit with an anchor phenomenon. Students are asked to wonder about that, to create models. That doesn't necessarily mean like a three-dimensional model, right? And kind of in this practice, we talk about modeling is showing your idea. How are you processing? How are you thinking about it? If I'm drawing a model of how I think this relationship between these two things is, John might be next to me drawing his version of what he, like, what's he thinking, right? How does he think it works? And then, so you've got this out there, and then you do some investigations. You do the activity. And then you have the content coming in, the vocabulary coming in, more of the teacher-directed work that then scaffolds that and says, okay, we all have this shared common experience. There's actually, you can see what's, you understand what's going on. There's language for that. There's scientific language we can use with that. Or we've discovered this piece with an investigation. How does that help us figure out this problem? And so the students are doing more of the lifting and then the teachers are affirming that or clarifying that as needed. And so then you keep kind of circling back around, asking more questions, refining the model, doing more investigating. And that, that's more of the cycle. And then at the end, instead of just assessing the content, you're asking students to apply their learning to that phenomenon. Can they explain this phenomenon we started with? And then can they also transfer it to like a new scenario now that they have the inner workings of how this all fits together? So that's kind of the heart of what the new standards say, right? And what ultimately, if we look forward to our curriculum review, right? We did a thorough process on visioning. Again, that was a year ago. And that led us to our vision, which is now a good guidepost for us. It captures these new standards. It captures what we heard from families and from teachers and from students. It mentions relevant phenomena. It talks about students using evidence to support their decisions, right? And connecting all of these pieces together. So we use this as our guidepost. And then we look at kind of where are we, right? Given all of that, given these changes in frameworks. So if we think back to 2016, when the new standards were adopted, there was a lot of really good work done in Wakefield at that time, driven by teachers and with the support of the admin team. They had to align their science to the new standards. The focus at that time was really on aligning the content. And they did that. And they did that very well. And at the time, there wasn't professional development. There wasn't curricular resources around this instructional shift, right? This shift to phenomena-based, that just didn't, it didn't exist at the time, right? They had, it was a new idea. We aligned the content and that just didn't happen yet. So jump ahead to now, where we've got the aligned content. And what we really need to do is change and adapt to this instructional approach and bring that, kind of modernize that to meet the standards' expectations. So moving forward, we have a clear-aligned vision, a coherent vision, a standards-aligned vision as a guidepost. And we started to look for curricular resources that exist now to see how can that support our move to phenomena-based teaching. There are still really limited resources or choices, is the short answer. So this is, I've probably seen this chart before. This has come up through other curriculum reviews. This is the district's kind of five-phase approach. So I just wanted to throw it in as far as an overview. We are in the middle of essentially looking at what resource. We've looked at the resources out there and then, starting in the fall, we hoped to, we hope to start implementing and developing moving forward. So, let's see. As we did this, and I think I've been over this piece before, but again, it sets the stage for where we land. This is Galvin-specific. So what, last year, about this time last year, when we were trying to find good resources that would support this, you know, anchor, this phenomena-based learning, we cast a really wide net. So as of last year, this was every possible science curriculum resource that was out there. And then we started to narrow it down. So we used what's referred to as EdReports. Ed Reports is a nonprofit that reviews and rates instructional materials. And it's one of the tools that DESI and others use to determine if materials are high-quality instructional materials. So we used that, we used that to start narrowing things down. Most of the curriculum on the list of things that are out there did not meet expectations. Most of the curriculum on the list of things that are out there did not meet expectations according to EdReport, so those are out. There were two that partially met expectations, there were two that met expectations, and then you'll see a few on there that aren't color coded. They have not yet been reviewed by EdReports. And we didn't want to hold that against those as options, right? Applying to EdReports is a really lengthy process, so just because you haven't been approved or not approved, we just, we wanted to investigate those as well. So when we look at what we actually ended up with, we ruled out, so we cast the wide net, we narrowed it down, and then within that, we ruled out some others just on our own internal review, right? We have our own rubric, we looked at some materials, and we were able to eliminate a few based on that as well. There were two that really rose to the top at that point. That was Open Saiad, which you have probably heard about, and then the other one that rose to the top at that point was TWIG. And TWIG was one of those that had not yet been rated. What it had going for it at that point was, you'll see the two little asterisks, that some of their units had earned what are referred to as NH, NGSS design badges. This is another way that a group can kind of submit high quality instructional materials is they can try to earn not a whole, necessarily a whole curriculum, but they can apply for a unit and say, hey, does this unit meet this whole phenomena based piece? And so TWIG hadn't submitted to EdReports, but had earned this badge on a couple of units, so I felt like, all right, they're going in the right direction. So at that point, we field tested, we're still talking about Galvin, we field tested both of those, and we've been doing that basically over the last year. Teachers in all grades, five through eight, field tested TWIG, and then in this fall, there were some field testing of Open Saiad. So what we learned since then in talking with the TWIG folks is that they have no plans to submit to EdReports, they don't think they would pass it, they're not going to, so they're off the list. They've, they've, we've since removed them from the list from their, just in conversation with them. So having eliminated TWIG, we really felt like we needed another option. And so no change wasn't a choice, right? We've set our new vision, we know we need to align, we've got the content aligned, we know we need to align to phenomena, so what's, what's the alternative? And so essentially, we designed, we developed this idea that we could create units, right? So the alternative is if we're not going to do Open Saiad would be to have teachers develop these units fitting really specific criteria, making sure that those units have an anchor phenomenon, making sure they integrate processes, essentially what it would take to get like a, a badged unit, right? So there are specific criteria that we could design. So we came down with these as a choice. And we met as a Galvin team over two different meetings, once in December and once in January. This is with the science teachers at Galvin. We talked at length about these choices, and we went through sharing kind of how did people feel in small group. We essentially decided as a group to move forward with a teacher designed units. So at this point, that's, that's our plan. We are going to be developing phenomena based units. We have access to open source material. One piece that is great about Open Saiad is that it is open source. So the, the curricular materials are out there, we can access them, we can use them. And we've created a template that's going to act to guide, not only guide the process of kind of making sure we hit all of these components, but also kind of where are we integrating the science and engineering practices, creating common assessments that have that performance transfer task piece. So that's all part of the work that lies ahead. So we realized that's not going to happen immediately, so we've have kind of mapped out our plan to develop a unit in time to implement in September, and then over the course of the next few years, continue developing those units in this style and then implement them as we go. Ambitious Science Teaching is a book that we've been using over the course of this year, and that continues to support our work, it's very much in line with our vision as well. I don't know if we want to pause and take questions on the middle school and then I can briefly talk about, I've been talking a while.
I'm curious, the other districts you said were doing much better than we were on standardized tests, are they creating their own curriculum or do we know what they're doing?
They're, it's very, it's quite varied at this point. We do know there's a dashboard, DESI has a dashboard where you can look up any of the, any of them, and I think it's really mixed.
And for the ones that are creating their own curriculum, are any of them willing to collaborate with us so we're not reinventing the wheel? I mean, I just, you could imagine, if many districts came together, we could make this process much easier than trying to do it all ourselves?
Right, I, I can definitely talk to, to my, the people I know in other districts. I don't, at this point, I don't know if other people are doing it on their own. I know what they, I don't, yeah, it's worth looking into though, yeah, collaboration, definitely a good thing.
Yeah, Melissa?
So we're implementing this next year.
At least one unit.
At least one unit next year.
Slow roll, yeah.
A lot of us have middle schoolers. What, what happens the rest of this year? You're, you're testing stuff in the fall?
I mean, they're, they're doing what they've been doing, what they have been doing. I mean, it's not, what they have been doing is not bad, right? I think that's the, it has been what, it's been what many people have been doing for years. It's more of a traditional style. I mean, I think we will say we've been testing out different performance assessments, right? Like there's, we're, we're playing with different components of it, but I think the plan is even if, as we roll out a new unit next year, we still have what we've been doing.
So, and, but let me, let me just, if I can add?
Sure.
That would not be different if we adopted a different curriculum?
That would not be different, yeah.
Right?
Right, if we were to adopt Open Saiad, for example, we wouldn't be rolling that out right now either.
Correct, correct.
Are these units for Open Saiad, are these pretty easily picked up and implemented by teachers?
What can you, what do you mean?
Like so, like, you know, I've used tons of stuff, like from, from all over to, and you know, like different types of curriculum instructional materials. Are these particular, are these pretty easy for teachers to like integrate into what they were doing in the past? Or is it kind of a heavy lift to, you know, figure out how to do these units?
Well, just to clarify.
Sure.
So the, the teachers piloted Open Saiad units and then ruled against implementing them moving forward. So what the recommendation is moving forward is to, if you look on slide 19, Joanne linked the, the unit planning template, that will be the, the standard for all the design that will happen for the rest of the year. So ultimately, I mean, I don't want to put words in Chris or John's mouth, I, I think that they ruled that it was kind of a heavy lift. It was, it was kind of a different, different than, not, not necessarily bad, but I think, I should just let you guys speak to it. Why am I trying to put words in your mouth? You're here for a reason, go ahead.
I mean, I do definitely think it, it is a pretty significant shift in like how you're instructing. Now, when we, I mean, you're going to talk about the high school shortly, we've also field tested and we're currently field testing our second unit now. And both times we did that, we had a two day professional development training, and I think that was really helpful because there's a lot of like structures and routines that are part of this, this new style of teaching. And being able to like practice that and experience that with someone who knows it really well, I think was, was really valuable. And I do think that as we've been doing it, some of those kind of like routines and practices become more embedded and they're just easier to, to do. So I think a lot of us are finding the second field test is going a little bit smoother because we, we know some of those things. So it is, it is tricky at first, but with the support, I do think it gets easier as you go.
So I would echo something that you had said, which I was thinking as well, is what's the heavy lift, I think with Open Saiad is the instructional approach shift, right? So it's this idea of, it's hard for, right, having top content and like, I have, I have this, all these great stories, I want to tell you all these things and how it all fits together, and like, that's hard to hold back and just wait while kids do the lift, the thinking, and they're not, and they're quiet. You're like, okay, so what do you think? Okay, so like, and that's, that's the hard part, right? Is like sticking with them and, and kind of changing the scene so that the students are doing, the expectation in the class is the students are doing more. That's a shift for the teacher and that's a shift for the student, and it takes a lot of getting used to. And so that takes time, right? That's not going to happen after one unit, that's not going to happen after two units. So I think when we look at using, if like, if we were to use Open Saiad as curricular resources, that it's, you can look at, I mean, it's laid out, like this is phenomenon, this is like, the pieces are there, the shift, I think the biggest shift comes in the way we're rolling, the instructional approach itself, which we would have in either one.
When you're developing the units, and I like the template, it seems like it's, it's fairly robust, is it, let's say there's four classes or however many classes, are like half of them working on, how do you align, like working on a unit? Like how is it peer reviewed? How does, how does each classroom sort of go like right down the process?
Yeah, so we'll work, I think I'm answering your question, but follow up if I don't. So we would work within a PLC, within a grade level. So like the grade seven science team will work to, to pick, like, well, the first thing we have to do is like a year at a glance, right? So we have to look at all the different standards, we have to sort them and to say like, what phenomena are going to be hit in seventh grade in order to get these different, what are our units going to be? And then taking one of those and diving in, and then really deciding how the teachers at that grade level want to do it. Like, do we want, one person's going to do unit one and one person's going to do unit two, are we going to work together at the beginning and then, I mean, I think that's to kind of be figured out based on the PLC or the grade level team.
So it kind of gets workshopped at the PLC level?
Yeah.
And I think the, the template, the, the whole design of, of the curriculum will live in our district as our curriculum. We would for five through eight designate on DESI that we have teacher generating units, but very specific to a unit template. And then again, I think this promotes, I think we're aligned in a lot of ways, but I still think there's room to align further across grade levels, grade to grade, we talk a lot about common experiences and having just the same expectations for curriculum, just all in one place. And like Joanne said, I think there were a lot of pros with Open Saiad, but we had to, you know, in the consensus, consensus meeting, really listen to the experiences of, of that grade band, five through eight, and I think there was just a thought that there was a desire to modify Open Saiad in a couple of different ways, whether it was pacing or activities or whatever, that it felt like it could maybe stray too far. And I know with a lot of what was being put out for Open Saiad grant opportunities, there was a real commitment, I think, to the, you know, exact way the curriculum is meant to be taught, and I just don't think five through eight felt ready to make that intensive commitment. So, you know, I think Joanne led this really well, listened to feedback, and then felt like we can still get where we want to go, but maybe in just a different way, and with maybe more teacher voice and ownership over the process. So I, I know it kind of feels like, why are you doing more work when there's other things out there, but I think that this ultimately could be better for our district because I think there's a real investment, we heard that from the teachers five through eight, that they really wanted to come together and make this their own.
I think it seems interesting, the idea that you can sort of make the curriculum sort of what you think fits into your classroom and what's been working for you and, but I'd be interested, so like Chris, Mr. Gorski, like as a seventh grade science teacher, knowing that you sort of were involved in this process, does that, is that, I don't know if exciting is the right word, but does that sort of entice you, the idea that you can sort of have a little bit more of a hand on the lever of sort of how that curriculum gets developed for you and your peers?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's, it definitely is going to be a lot of work, like everybody said, but Open Saiad would be equally as much work to take on. At least we have, it's, it was so scripted, it just felt like there was no opportunity to be creative as science teachers. So like labs, activities that we still want to do or still carry on, or put in our own piece to it, that's what we're looking for.
Oh, that's great. That sounds good.
And within the unit plan too, I, you know, there's also, Joanne has established with the support department, a whole project planner as well, because I, I think that was a big, all right, so now we've made this decision, not that it needs to be, you know, micromanaged to the smallest, you know, amount of time, but it, there has to be, it is an organization of a five through eight science curriculum, so there has to be a pretty specific project plan, touch points, feedback, so that everyone is really clear on the work, getting similar feedback, and then, you know, able to continue on independently, knowing exactly the direction to go in. So I really appreciate the work that's gone into that too, and I think it seems really well organized. And, and a lot of the, we can talk funding at the end, but I'll, I'll explain that too. Were you going to ask funding? Oh my gosh, we're starting now. I'll, we, I'll go over costs and all of that at the end, because I know we, we need to dip into high school.
Just one other, I'm just curious about the phenomena based, the, the figuring it out science, what does that timeline look like? Because the approach has to be drastically different from me feeding you facts as opposed to sort of you get it on your own. When we see this happening in other districts, like what is that like? Like when you talk to other sort of science curriculum groups, other science teachers, like what do they talk about when they talk about that process? That is hard to sort of not just want to get students to the answer, but being there waiting for them to sort of get to it on its own.
Yeah, so I guess my question, my question is to clarify one first, do you mean the process for implementing it over time, or do you mean the students' experience in a unit?
The students' experience, the classroom experience of sort of being that, you know, letting them lead themselves, like what does that timeline look like? It seems like it would be a little bit more.
I have a quick idea, but then I think these guys might add on too. I, I would say initially is, is long, that's like the initial feedback, right? It's so different than what our traditional approach is, that you're, that students are asked, and teachers are asked to stick with this phenomenon for, like, we're coming back to this again, that that's the initial reaction, and we're not, we're not used to doing it, right? So I think we're used to this fast pace, like what's next, what's the next thing, what's the next thing? And what we're, in a phenomena based curriculum, you're asking students, similar to what I'm thinking in like EL in the elementary school, those of you with elementary kids, like, you know, they're studying, my son's studying animal defenses for like a quarter of the year, right, in literacy. So it's this like really long unit, and it feels that way, especially for veteran teachers who have been, who are, are used to their style. So I think that's the initial response is I would say it feels long, but I think you may have.
Unless, you want to ask your question?
Well, from what you're describing, is this a depth versus breadth issue? Like, so with these units on Open Saiad, are you diving way more into a specific topic in order to help facilitate student interest? Could you be able to do way more with that particular lab or activity where the old school system was more like breadth, where you're just like covering a ton of material? Is my characterization completely inaccurate or is that?
I mean, I do, I think what I would say to that is like, certainly, it's certainly diving a lot deeper into a topic. But I think a big part of this shift is that with the NGSS and the new standards, it, it emphasizes really three ideas, which is the content, the practices, and then what they call cross cutting concepts, two ideas that span grade levels and disciplines. So I think that whereas kind of the older traditional way is, is really emphasizing the content, like let's just cover this content and then this topic and then this topic, but this one really weaves in those practices and those, those cross cutting ideas. So in, in terms of like depth, it's like depth of content, but then also those pieces too. And when I say that, I mean like, you'll, you'll be like looking at all these data sets and they're trying to make meaning from that. Or like you're spending this time developing models to make their, their thinking visible of different ideas they have. So it, it is slower, but it, but it's like a richer type of thinking, I'd say.
I want to give credit where credit is due here. I think, you know, I'm an old math science teacher, and, and I was, you know, I taught physics and I taught, I taught information, right? This, this notion of, you know, committing yourselves, right, to taking on the curriculum work, not being handed a curriculum, right? High quality instructional materials are important, standards are important, but they alone don't equal good outcomes, right? The, the kind of the magic. The, the kind of the magic is in the classroom, is in the instruction. And I've been in both of your classes, I've been in all three of your classes, right? And, and I know that there are things that you do that are very cool to convey the science behind the topics you're teaching, right? I love it. I think it's like such a fun place for me to land during any day, right? But what this does is this kind of opens up to say, you know, for others to say, these are ways to share this information and we're willing to do this and we're willing to write our own curriculum and commit ourselves to this work over time. It would be easier to buy something off the shelf and then think, well, now I got to dig in, work on changing my instructional practices. But you guys aren't doing that. So I think, I, I think I, from where I sit, I, I really commend, you know, the teachers in this space. Joanne, I commend your leadership up in at your professional development. Outstanding. So fun. So fun, right?
Good Friday afternoon.
But you know, like, but, but yes, having a Friday afternoon. But it is, but to see teachers, teachers are with one another and they're engaged. They're learning, right? And so.
It's a great team.
It's different. It's different. It feels good. And I know it's, please, I know it's difficult, but I commend the teachers, Chris, John. Joanne, thank you for kind of taking this, taking this on the way that you are. It's not easy and, and really, it's awesome. So I just want to say that. So I don't want to cut off your slides, please.
Thank you, that's all right.
Any other middle school questions? Do you have a question? Okay, we'll move on to high school.
All right, so the high school is a shorter version, so it should be okay. So we also looked at high school biology, which is, we teach in ninth grade at Wakefield High. And we did the same process, right? We cast a super wide net. There were fewer options to start. A couple of those did not meet Ed Reports' expectations. And let's see what happened here. The, there were, there was one that met partially, one that met expectations. And actually, even now, Open Syed had, all of their units had earned their design badge, but they're currently under review at Ed Reports. So we narrowed it down. At that point, we narrowed it down to the BSCS Biology, which was the one that had met expectations, which the ninth grade bio team field-tested last spring. And then Open Syed Biology, which they field-tested this fall and are now doing their second unit of that they just started. And so essentially, it's, it's going to be either Open Syed or the teacher-generated units. I think the bio team, for this decision, it was really down to like me and consultation with the five biology teachers and one of the special ed teachers that co-teaches in biology. And so we're kind of agreed to live this next unit and see where that lands. And so we will know specifically by the end of the year whether we're going to just use the Open Syed unit as, or units as is or do kind of a similar, similar model as the Galvin. So one of the, one of the two will happen. And then, oh, so that was our grade nine biology. We didn't look at chemistry or physics. There are, there is nothing on Ed Reports for either chemistry or physics at this time. It's just not there yet. And so we had our hands full with the Galvin and with looking at biology. And then the other really big work that we looked at, at the high school, was around our course offerings. And again, we did a lot of surveys and worked with that. And in our newest program of studies, we're excited to really increase what students have for choices. So essentially, there were two big changes made. One is that in grade 10, so students would take ninth grade biology and then in grade 10, they have a choice to take chemistry, physics, or an environmental science. They, the traditional path, which I think many students will continue to take, would be biology and then chemistry and then physics, or biology and chemistry and then a third-year elective. And so that, that path still exists, but what we've done is just open up, open up options. There's a lot of different scenarios that we have. Students coming into district, students doing different coursework, their freshman or sophomore year. And we wanted just to make sure that no one felt excluded from choice options. And so certain courses still have prerequisites. But what this has led to, I think, and John can speak to this, is really great conversations, especially with, I mean, with all the science teachers and their students, but specifically in ninth grade. The bio teachers talking to their students around, so what are your goals? What are your interests? Looking through the program of study, what courses like junior or senior year look really cool? What are you interested in? What might, what are the important courses to take to fulfill that interest without removing options, right? So, oh, you're interested in anatomy and physiology? You should really make sure we're doing bio and chem. Those are good prerequisites for taking that. Oh, you're really interested in engineering? You might want to do bio and then chem. Make sure you get physics, but you could do the engineering elective. So having, having those conversations with students has really increased. And then along with that, we are offering a few more electives. We've kind of added to the mix based on what we had heard from students in those surveys. So we've added for next year, a semester forensics course, a semester intro to game design course. Traditionally, we've had CP in astronomy, and now we are going to also have an honors astronomy course. I think that is, anything else to say about the program studies? So I think that, that was it for my high school. Should be, I'll say it was much quicker.
And just go back to the, been working with Joanne throughout the process too, to just map out what cost will be in terms of the recommendations. So we each, both Galvin and the high school, have a building-based instructional supply line that funds a lot of the consumable materials through the science department. A lot of the money that we're, we're budgeting for the recommendations is a combination of professional development and teacher time outside of the school day. It's just work that just can't be completed, completed within the contractual day. Like Joanne said, we're going to use all of our remaining professional development time, focus on review, but then we'll have additional hours designated for teachers to put into development of units. So I don't anticipate costs exceeding what we've spent in the past. So as Joanne had mentioned, we have McGraw-Hill licenses that come at a cost, you know, additional. I, I think McGraw-Hill went up to the grade nine as well. Or not, yeah, again. So when you look at kind of what we were spending out on that, we're not looking to exceed what we spent in the past. Whereas had we gone with something like a twig, I was really hoping they didn't like that one. Because that was pretty pricey. I wasn't quite sure if we would be able to afford that, especially not a full outfit like we did, because there was, again, no grant funding that came with it. Open Syed at the high school, if they do go with grade nine, there is some grant, potential grant funding, maybe? Not, not on this one.
Not for grade nine.
Yeah. But again, that would be more of a budging in towards professional development.
Yeah, the P, I think the big lift for, if, if grade nine were to go with Open Syed, it is around PD. But they've already, already been trained on two units.
Yep.
And then what we found, especially in the second unit, is not necessarily buying the kits, but buying the components that we need. We already have so much when it's like Petri dishes, we don't need to buy that. We have, like, we have, so being thoughtful in, in the materials that, and only purchasing what we need as opposed to a kit that just comes with excess for us.
But roughly, you know, in terms of how we did, we did budget out a rough number of hours, which, you know, will run between $10,000 and $15,000 a year, if that helps to give you like a number. That was the number that we were looking at. And that's at all of our teacher, you know, offering opportunities for work for all. Because I, our ideal is to get all of our teachers across grade levels to, to do this work together. And so we kind of did like a highest amount estimate.
Any questions?
How long is the runway for this going to be? Like, when we think about benchmarks or success in terms of assessing how well it's working? Like a two-year window?
Yeah, so I think essentially what we have said is three years to get to, because, to get to full, all units completed. And part of there, there's a little bit of ambiguity in knowing how many units there will be, right? Because that, we have to kind of map out first at that year at a glance, like, are, how are we going to chunk this? Is a grade seven going to chunk it into four units? Is it going to be six units? That's just, we need to figure that out first. So, and then the idea would be one to two units new a year. And then, so that could take up to three years, I would say. There was a question earlier, and I, I didn't speak to it, but it brings up a good point. It was like, how do we measure this, right? This idea of data and recognizing it. It's really tricky in the land of science. Because, you know, MCAS at the middle school, it continues to be important. The MCAS, I didn't mention it, is, is also shifting towards testing this. So part of the conflict previously is that we can say we need to shift towards phenomena-based learning, but the MCAS continue to just test content. And so it's, it's hard to, it's hard to sell that, right? To teachers or to, when, when you want it to do well. So the MCAS this year and next year will be piloting at the grade five and grade eight science test. One of the days will be the traditional test and one of the days will be like a new assessment that is more storyline-based, right? Where there's like an animation and a scenario and they need to apply, you know, simulations and do the practices of science in the test. So there, that's the next two years they're going to be testing that. And so even our MCAS data, I think, is important and will help to determine how, how things are going, but it will be in flux for the next couple of years anyway. So I think we, we have to look at that. And that is one of the most consistent things we have, even though it's changing. You know, creating these units will allow us to create, to ensure we have common assessments. I think that work had been done a few years ago and had been, it's gotten, we're less common assessment now. So I think doing a unit and ensuring we have not only a common assessment on content, but also that we are assessing the standard, the practices through a performance task, where essentially means students are asked to transfer what they've learned to something novel, something new. That that, having that common assessment is an opportunity for data. And then ultimately, we've been brainstorming how to best assessment. There's not like diagnostic or progress monitoring. All these things we have for math and ELA don't exist, as far as I know, and I've looked a lot, don't exist for science at this point. And so any kind of internal measures that we want to take, we need, would need to create that. Whether that's using a rubric to assess students on how they are in the practices. Like, there's, I have a lot of ideas, but nothing exists yet. So it's, monitoring is tricky.
Thank you. And certainly, you know, thank you for the work that you, that has gone into getting you here. That's, that's for sure. And I couldn't agree more with the superintendent's comment about that, that, you know, at the, at the middle school level, making the decision already to, to sort of, you know, build this on your own and put your own creative energies is, is the harder thing to do. So that's, that's pretty impressive. So thank you for that too. My question is about, is about our grade nine. What does, what does implementation in September look like?
Yep. So implementation in September, let's say we were to do an Open Syed unit. That means that, given that they've already done two units, I would imagine we would definitely do those two units again and would probably add at least one more unit next year, if not two. I don't know. It means we would begin doing those units next year. So if we did a teacher-generated unit, that we would have at least one unit created for September. Hopefully two for next year.
Sure. So, so that, I guess then, you know, backing up, then that means that your decision is pretty soon. September's like six months away.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, I think we're.
We're, so right now, we're, we're field-testing a second unit. And just to give some background, the, the unit that we field-tested in the fall is about like ecosystem interactions. And that topic is very different in biology from like some cell and molecular-based ideas. So we, we felt we wanted to sample a different unit that kind of covered that topic so we could get a sense of both of them to compare, to see if it's something that we want to move forward with. So we're currently field-testing that now. And that's going to take us probably through March, maybe early April. And then I think at that point, we'll come together to, to make our decision about which direction we're going to go.
So good luck with that too.
We'll take all the luck.
So I, I ask this question a lot. Wondering how you plan to differentiate the instruction for kids that need extra supports, for kids that need more in-depth study, for our multi-language learners? How you're going to work in conjunction, especially if you're designing your own curriculum, how you're going to work in conjunction with the special education teachers? And especially the kids that are in a sub-separate classroom and are transitioning between each classroom. Sometimes they're with their science instructor and sometimes they're not. Like, how is, how is that, you know?
Yeah, I think one of the benefits with the phenomena-based instruction in general and the instructional routines that go with it is that it is very much in alignment with all the research about how students learn language. And so when you think about an English learner and the idea of giving, or a student with disabilities and the idea of not front-loading vocabulary, but instead creating a common experience that has access points for everyone, that is like what all the recommendations say for many different populations of learners. And so by having that phenomena upfront and having students wonder, they are also being asked to share their own experiences. And so in, for example, for an English learner or for potentially a student who doesn't have a lot of success in school, they do have life experiences and that is a wealth of knowledge. And so having an, an option, a point in which they can share that information is, is huge. And so, and they, maybe they share that as a drawing or they share that as a connection. It doesn't necessarily need to be in the scientific language. And therefore, you've got students who are trans-language, like, there's, there's a lot that can happen by keeping, having that common experience. So even just changing the instructional approach, I think, starts to tackle a lot of that in the core of what we're doing. And then, but then at the same time, if we're having, you know, like we would for any, like we do now, you know, there's constant collaboration between the science teachers and the special educators. We, if we have more common activities and common assessments, those are things that we can work in conjunction with the ASL teacher to make sure that we have the proper modifications. That it, the more things we have in common and laid out, the more we can make these modifications and continue to use them across team. And so that it's not just each teacher making the modification, like, it's not siloed. So I think, of course, we have to do that work. We do that work anyway, right? I think no matter if, if we did Open Syed or what we do currently, we're already doing that. That level of differentiation is just then, it's a lot of work, but it's also the expectation, I mean, that's part of the art of what we're doing. And I think the instructional approach really helps to support all kids. But I don't know if you have any examples, but.
No, I mean, I would just, I would reiterate that. Like, I think a lot of the, a lot of the instructional materials that we're using, it'll be like, here's a reading or here's a video and here's a picture. And everyone kind of is able to pick up on something. And I think what, what's really nice about it is it is very open-ended. And so it does have this idea that like everyone has something to contribute. So someone might notice like this little piece over here and someone else might pick up on something. And then it's in those conversations where we share those ideas and suddenly like things start to come together. And I think that that, that's really powerful in the work.
And that's already budgeted for and the, we talked about the cost being mostly in the PB and in the, in the salaries and all of that.
Yeah, and the model, the special education models for, for most students are kind of set up for this collaboration success, whether it's a co-taught science class at the high school or either para-educator or special education support, supporting science. We're starting to look more carefully at the substantially separate programs, because I know you were curious about that too. Like, just the students that maybe are in a program where most of their day is outside of the general ed setting. How do they get access to science? So we're, we're. So, we're trying, our curriculum team has, works closely with Rosie and the special ed coordinators, we're really starting to kind of dip into those spaces as well, to ensure that all students are getting a standards-aligned education modified to their level. So, we're looking at what does the academic substantially separate programming look like, and we're kind of dipping in and just having more conversations, more so at the elementary. I think we've started a little bit more at middle school. High school's different, just in terms of the different course structures. So, at our elementary level, we're able to integrate students into science with a science specialist, and it's just, it's more possible. Certain opportunities get more difficult, but it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be providing quality access to science at all levels. So, it's on, you know, it's on everyone's mind just to kind of look at it and make sure that that's happening.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you so much. This just seems like a ton.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Nice job. Thank you so much. The last update I have for the committee are, it's an update from the high school. It's about senior privileges. Earlier this year, our administrators came in and talked about piloting senior privileges for our seniors. Second semester, excuse me, the second quarter just ended, the first semester just came to a close. Based on the information that the high school administrators presented, one of the things that they wanted to do is to kind of get information out to parents, which they did. And so, in that process of just trying to explain senior privileges and get feedback both from seniors and from parents and families, they had 123 students submit a request to participate in senior privileges, right? And so, just for background for those that don't, that might not remember what senior privileges are and what was being proposed, what the high school administration was proposing is that students that met a prerequisite, right, of grades, attendance, and disciplinary status. For quarter two, what happened would be, if they had an ASC in the morning, they could come in late, they could come in at, excuse me, 8:34. And if they had an ASC at the end of the day, they could leave early, which was at 1:10, right? So, if you had an ASC, if you had a, there aren't many students that have this, but if you had two ASCs, one in the morning and the afternoon, you couldn't do both. You could only do one. But of the 123 students that applied to be part of this pilot or these privileges, 101 students kind of met the criteria and were eligible. Families of those students were emailed beginning February 5th, and just to remind them about the requirements and the responsibilities, the high school's looking at starting privileges this week. The breakdown, you know, they have students in what we call ABC. So, in the morning, what you have is period one is ABC, and it's a six-day cycle, so it goes ABC, ABC, right? So, there are numbers that are provided to the committee. There are 16 students in period A, 16 students in B, and 19 in C. So, those students, twice a week, would be able to come in late, right? The students listed, the data listed that I shared earlier, and EFG, that's at the end of the day. So, those students would be allowed to leave at 1:10 PM. They'd leave a little bit early. And that's, the students are, in E period, it's 9, F period, it's 18, and G gets 20. And so, they would also have kind of two rotations a day. And so, they're really excited to kind of give this a go and to pilot this. And, you know, we're seeking, obviously, the support of the committee, and we're excited to offer this as a, and to see, and to give students this opportunity, and to also give them a little extra time. And we think they're going to use it wisely, and we have faith that this has really nice potential. We're watching it very closely. Again, to continue the privilege, you have to continue to kind of be in line with the expectations that were necessary for you to be kind of accepted or eligible, right? If you will. So, that's where we are in terms of that. I wanted to give an update there.
Great. Appreciate that. I know we had, we had left sort of the, we had the presentation from Ms. McLeod and the students who proposed this a few weeks ago. We said we were going to sort of table this and leave the time open sort of for folks to read into it a little bit, to get a little bit of data, which you've provided. Thank you so much for that. And for any sort of public comment, if folks had anything that you sort of had given thought to around that privilege. I think there was time for that. We got a little bit, not much in terms of feedback. But I think the, I think the students presented well. I think Ms. McLeod is sort of anxious to give the students this opportunity. And so, I think we are, we're in a position, if somebody wanted to make a motion, that we sort of allow this process, I think it'd be added to the handbook, I believe we had.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Great.
I guess I'll make one. Move to approve the senior privilege of, I don't know what you want to call the early warning, late arrival and early dismissal as presented by Ms. McLeod.
Second. Bush made in second. Any discussion? Mr. McLeod?
Is this a pilot, or is this for permanent, permanency?
I think we'd like to see how it works before we commit for it being a forever program, right? I, you know, so I would like to be able to report back to the committee and continue to give updates, right? So, we'll do it for the remainder of this year. It will be for seniors, and we'll kind of, we can revisit this, right?
So, I'll amend my motion to say for the remainder of the 2024, 2025 school year.
Yeah, they presented it as a pilot, so it...
I think they did. There was even some talk about D Block. You know, didn't want to leave those kids out. If, you know, see how, see how it went. Great.
Yeah, the nature of my inquiry was, was how did that fit in with the motion?
Sure. Great. Motion's made, seconded, amended. Discussion. Those in favor? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your support. And that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Looking forward to hearing back.
Next is Chair comments and updates, and I really just had one, which is there, and I had said this before, and I think the school committee sort of heard me, heard me say it before, but there are some, some changes made at the federal level in the executive branch that has made some members of our community a little nervous about their sort of space in our community. And I think when, when I see that in a national landscape, I sort of go back to what our sort of guiding principles are as a district for students and for families. And I think that it's, it's well worth sort of restating our vision, our mission, and our core values. So, I think we sort of crafted some words that would go to that, and so I'd just kind of like to read them. And so, to state that the vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners and who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing a rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. The Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education recently released an advisory addressing the need to support all students, including LGBTQ students. We wanted to take the time tonight to share our alignment to this advisory and restate our commitment to all of our students and families in the Wakefield Public Schools. We, along with our teachers, administrators, and staff, work hard every day to ensure that our students feel a sense of belonging, support, and respect for them as individuals, and we have established our core values to reflect this. Our clarity of purpose is to inspire the level of learning, and our culture of practice is to be respectful and caring. It's worthy of noting that our core values are reflected in our mission statement at every level of our district. At the Doyle Early Childhood Center, we hold the firm belief that children learn best when they are in an environment where they feel safe, secure, and respected. This foundational principle is the bedrock of our early education program, ensuring that the youngest learners feel valued and supported. In our elementary schools, we teach the principles of mutual respect, kindness, and compassion. We teach to celebrate our differences, and we foster an inclusive environment where every child feels seen and heard. At the Galvin Middle School, we work diligently to instill values of integrity, community, and acceptance. We emphasize the importance of relationships, helping students understand the value of connecting with others and building a supportive community. At Wakefield Memorial High School, we have a commitment to excellence in teaching and learning, and foster a respectful learning community that promotes personal responsibility and acceptance of individual differences. These values guide our high school students as they prepare for their future endeavors, encouraging them to embrace diversity and act with integrity. Our schools continue to uphold these values with an unwavering commitment. We recognize that fostering an inclusive environment is about nurturing a community where every student feels empowered to succeed. We're dedicated to fostering mutual understanding of all cultures, backgrounds, identities, ideas, beliefs, learning styles, and abilities that differ from our own, and understand that everyone brings unique skills, perspectives, and experiences. And together, we'll continue to create a safe and supportive learning environment where everyone is honored and respected. There's also some, some information there. I think Dr. Lyons, we've asked that, we make this sort of as a joint statement, and include in that some background from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, their advisory report, where they just speak to sort of Mass General Law and some ethos that we hold as a state, as a larger community, to go to this. And so, that was kind of what I wanted to say, is just that we, we exist here for every family that's in our district, that everyone should feel safe, and that what we teach our kids is to be members of that community despite their differences, in fact, in favor of their differences, because that's, I think, what strengthens us as a community. And I think we've only become stronger as sort of that mosaic of our student population has gotten a little bit more vast. Shared experiences are, I think, better. So, with everyone's sort of permission, I think I would like the superintendent to feel free to sort of release that statement to the Wakefield Public Schools and our larger community. Mr. McLeod?
I'm not sure if you were looking for this, Stephen, or not, but I would certainly be supportive of making a motion, you know, to that effect. I think standing behind this is a, we're at a unique, you know, turning point in our country, in our community, and I think we very much want to be able to stand behind our core values. And the stronger, with the strongest, you know, voices, you know, inviting everyone to the, to the table to participate is exactly, I think, where we should be tonight. So, one, I want to thank you and Dr. Lyons for the leadership that you've brought to this effort. I want to thank those members of the community that reached out to us and really, you know, advocated that something like this would be part of our work. So, with that in mind, if you were, if you were so engaged, I would, I would make a motion that we, that we endorse the restating of Wakefield Public Schools' mission, vision, and core values as read by the Chair this evening.
Second. Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Thank you, Mr. McLeod. I appreciate the motion. Those in favor? And that was your answer. Thank you. Thank you. I thought that was important. Okay. Moving on to subcommittee reports. Finance and Facilities, Mr. McLeod?
Thank you. We have met once since our last meeting. Our next meeting is this week, this coming Thursday. We've been digging in, you know, a little bit more, actually, quite a bit more, obviously. Couple interesting topics in addition to, you know, hearing some updates on where we are with the rollout of Fiscal '25, obviously, supporting and listening to Dr. Lyons and Ms. Bufagna with the work in building '26. But we've had a couple particularly points of interest around Fiscal '26, and appreciation for how to balance some of the, the expectations, or at least the inquiries made of us by town officials, both a year ago during, during FinCom work, as well as in recent weeks. What exactly is sort of the, some of the push points and some of the opportunities for, for what Fiscal '26, and perhaps even more, more critically so, what Fiscal '27, which is going to be even, even, you know, another crunch year? And as we continue our reliance, or we continue discussions upon greater reliance on revolving funds and some of those, you know, those funding, you know, sources outside of the taxpayer, what does some of that look like, you know, moving forward? So, it's been a pretty robust conversation in the last couple of meetings, and I anticipate it continuing right through the presentation by the administration on March 11th. One thing that we've also been, been discussing, which we will hope, we'll be making announcements soon, it'll be on Thursday, or it is on Thursday's agenda, is the notion of hosting a, a sort of a, sort of a budget, budget, a pre-budget session with our FinCom liaisons. I think one of the things that we've, we've talked about is being able to appreciate some of the questions and some of the concerns and some of the controversies, frankly, that we experienced at the last two town meetings, and candidly, what, how can, what can we do proactively, not to avoid the questions, but to be better prepared for them, and present opportunities to the members of the Finance Committee and the community to ask us questions and to, and to seek, you know, guidance, you know, outside of the stressors of a FinCom meeting, where the, you know, the fire department budget is at seven and we're at eight, and someone, the DPW is at 10, you know? That's, that's, there are some pressure points there that maybe we want to try to relieve. So, I've had the opportunity to speak with some of the leaders of the Finance Committee. Not only are they open to this idea, it was a sort of a joint, you know, a jointly developed idea. So, hopefully, we'll be able to put a date and time to this, you know, sort of, you know, Budget 101, and be able to talk about some of the issues, concerns of the past couple of town meetings. Not to control the narrative per se, that the town meeting has to take on the life that it does. That's the beauty of our, of our democracy while it's still standing. But be able to just, you know, learn, learn from the last, last couple of years, and be able to provide an opportunity for questions that are, that we can answer, you know, perhaps better in a smaller, less formal environment than, you know, the town meeting floor. So, that will be, so we've had a pretty busy plate the last, the last, you know, month and a half or so.
And we are thinking about having that sort of discussion as a, as a Finance Facility Subcommittee meeting, having it be open.
Yes.
And inviting.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Yeah, that's a great point. Thanks, Stephen. It would be a Subcommittee meeting, but certainly the opportunity for, for everyone to, that wanted to, it would be a public meeting, as they all are, of course. And the, there isn't really a target audience per se. Obviously, as a public meeting, anyone would, it would be welcome to attend. But in working with the Finance Committee liaisons, we'd want to be a little more prepared for them as the audience.
Yeah.
Or at least them as the, as the, as the, as the engaging audience.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Labor and Personnel, Dr. Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Stephen. The Labor and Personnel Committee met last Monday. We continued our conversations with Unit C of the WEA for a successor contract, and that went well. We have one more meeting where we'll be continuing to exchange proposals, and then kind of really dive into negotiations after that, and that's scheduled for February 26th. So, that'll be kind of our last exchanging meeting, and then kind of moving forward from there to kind of... and then kind of moving forward from there to, to kind of settle this contract as soon as possible, so. And then beyond that, we'll start some of the other negotiating units will be coming forward that we'll be working on as well. So that'll be kind of coming up in the rest of the spring for us as well. So February 26th, though, is the next meeting.
Great. A lot of work.
Oh, '24, sorry.
Student Services, Ms. Colleran is not able to join us, but Ms. Quinn, you want to give an update on Student Services?
Yeah, absolutely. So we had our last public meeting regarding late start times, and we have not had a meeting outside of that. But we have, I believe we have one scheduled for early March to discuss late start times and that we should have some kind of presentation together by the end of March.
Great. Great. Policy and Communications, Ms. Davis?
We met back on Monday, the 27th. And I will say, prior to the meeting, I had the opportunity for, I would say, two productive, pretty blunt and open collaboration sessions with some of our WEA leaders to talk about two of the policies in particular that they had sent some feedback on. One was the field trip policy, and the other was the staff conduct policy. And I'll talk about both of those as I go through the update, but I did want to add that into, to this update. So for tonight, we will have four different motions, which I'll, Kevin will read once I get through my, my update. There will be two different policy books that were on the table from our last meeting. And these are sections of the policy book. Just as a refresher, we've been going through each of the MASC leg reviews for sections of our policies in trying to, where possible, adopt the best practices of MASC combined with some of our unique practices in the district where the MASC policies don't meet what we're looking for. And so we have two different sections, which we will push for approval tonight. We, during our meeting, did not review any new sections, but there is a additional section E that Ms. Quinn has available for us to review during our next meeting. I don't yet have a date scheduled for that. Tonight, we will also, in our motions, have a CPAC policy to put on the table. We, we were waiting and waiting and waiting for some draft policy for MASC, which didn't happen. And so I believe Dr. Lyons and Ms. Quinn worked on drafting an original version. We had some great input from CPAC to fix or add to some of the information we had to align with the way that they operate. And so we have a policy that will go on the table tonight for two weeks on that. The field trip policy, I do not have a revised policy for discussion yet. So when I brought the feedback that came from the discussion of the WEA, WEA leaders back to our January 27th meeting, I would say that the group as a whole was not supportive of some of the changes that we had made. And specifically in the areas of timely communication, as well as like the aspirational goal of the district of, what do we do with students who aren't going on one of these overnight field trips, especially the bigger overnight field trips that are more grade-wide? And so where I left that is I owe a, well, once I get a date back, I owe another follow-up meeting where Dr. Lyons will join me with the WEA leaders to try to work through those issues and try to figure out how we can come to some resolution and draft a revised version of that policy. We did have success on drafting a new version of the WPS Employee Staff Code of Conduct that will be on the table as a motion tonight for review. And so we did go through that, I would say, sentence by sentence with the WEA leaders to try to figure out, you know, I, I know this group as a whole kind of had some negative feedback in, in terms of some of the MASC boilerplate and how it was worded. So we did come to some wording that at least together, we were, we found was acceptable to move forward with, and that's what we'll have as a motion on the table tonight. And so with that, I'll pass it off to Mr. Fontana for our motions.
Motion to approve Policy Book Section C as presented.
Second. Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Motion to approve Policy Book Section F as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any, any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Motion to lay on the table CPAC Policy 223 for two weeks, period until February 25th, 2025, School Committee.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
And a motion to lay on the table the Code of Conduct for Wakefield Public Schools Department Employee Policy, 701 RGGEB, for two weeks until February 25th, 2025.
Second. Motion's been seconded, any discussion? Mr. Markham?
And I know, obviously, this, this will be part of the, the opportunity would be part of the conversation of, on February 25th. But I did, I did just want to mention, I guess, as a point of appreciation to the Policy Subcommittee and the leadership of, of WEA for helping, you know, get us from where we were in our previous iteration to, to where we are tonight. I think that, I mean, I was one of those that had spoken with some questions, concerns. So I, I appreciate very much the, the collaboration that got us here. One of the things that, that, that strikes me in, in, in reading this now and again, I know it will cover from the 25th, but just maybe if there's conversations or maybe some thoughts we could all share between now and then, is this reads incredibly well, but it doesn't read like a code of conduct. Code of Conduct, it seems a little harsh. And I think that was probably one of my concerns at the beginning, was the harshness of the, of, of calling it a code of conduct. I, I love the way this is read now, but it almost seems like a professional expectations of, of staff or something that has a, that doesn't have a punitive sort of sound to it. And maybe it's just me. Code of Conduct is like, is like a punitive thing or a disciplinary thing. I would, I would throw out the possibility of maybe we raise that to something like professional expectations of, of all staff or something, something like that. That's just an initial thought in reading this the other day when it came in. So I'll, I'll leave that out there. Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Yeah, no, I do think that's good feedback. The title of the document is not something we reviewed. It was the existing title for the document we have. So I do think your feedback is good there, and I think it's something we should consider when we view this for acceptance on the 25th.
Thank you.
Just to provide you some context, the, the MASC policy title refers back to Mass General Law. I can't remember the exact section, but, so that, I mean, that's definitely something that we can amend, but I, I think that having that reference to, to Mass General Law is still important.
Yeah, really, we can.
I mean, it doesn't have to be the only title.
Correct. And we could certainly make the reference to Mass General Law by.
I don't, I don't think the title is as important as the policy.
No. It just does, right, it just doesn't read like a code of conduct now. It reads like a value statement. It reads like a set of professional standards.
I would just echo. I know that that was a challenging document to come to and, and do appreciate that collaboration that happened. It's always a, a good work when that, that occurs. So, thank you. All right. Those in favor, laying that on the table. unanimous, thank you so much. Does that mean you're all set, Mr. Fontana?
Yeah.
Okay. Policy motions. All right. Moving on to Liaison Reports, if any. Ms. Quinn?
The Youth Council had a really great response to their winter clothing drive. They got together on this past Saturday and packaged everything up. The kids, I wasn't able to attend, but the kids did a really great job. And it was really inspiring to see.
Awesome. Always do good work. Anyone else? No, seeing none. Future dates and agenda items? Our next meeting will be on the 25th. Feel free to submit any, any agenda items that you would like to see. School Committee comments? Ms. Davis?
I had the opportunity to see Voices of Steel perform at the Galvin. I'll get the acronym wrong for the competition, but it was basically a a cappella competition. And they came in second place and are continuing on, I believe, to Worcester next for the next level of the competition. And I, I don't believe they've ever had the opportunity to, to get to that level. And they were truly impressive. I mean, the skills of, of our students never ceases to amaze me, both in terms of obviously our musicians, which I talk about a lot, but hearing our vocalists were also equally amazing. And then there was also a performance by the high school jazz.
Jazz band?
Yes, jazz ensemble. I forget, I probably get the name wrong, but, and they were, they performed while the judges were deliberating, and that was also nice to see as well, so.
That sounds good.
That is cool.
That sounds good. Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Lyons?
So from, from the administration, from all of our principals, faculty, and staff, would like to wish everyone a terrific February break. I know it's not coming until Friday, but, you know, wishing everyone a safe and restful week.
God will. One thing I, I'm curious about is, so Parent University is coming up. I know it's coming after our next meeting. It's March 8th, I believe.
Yeah.
And registration has opened?
Not yet. We're still finalizing some of the information we need, need for advertising. So it will be, actually, you've probably checked the website quicker than me.
All right.
I know it's in the works. Have you checked it today?
Uh, no.
Okay. Yeah, I know.
It's like eight to noon at the Galvin. You've lined up the keynote speaker already. You're just working on the workshops.
Yeah, we're working on finalizing the workshop descriptions, and then it should be very soon. We're, our, our goal was before break.
Yep.
To be like advertised.
Childcare.
Yep. Wakefield Academy will be there with childcare options, which should be really good.
Yeah, it's, it's always a good, it's always a good time. Unfortunately for me, it's also Pinewood Derby Day, and I think there's a Science Olympiad competition. So I'm, I'm pulled in directions. Yeah.
We have a, yeah, we have a save the date out, but no official registration yet.
Great.
Just final details.
We should bring the Pinewood Derby to the Wakefield Uni, to the Parent University.
Wouldn't that be a good time?
That would be very cool.
Only if Doug does a physics lesson.
Science and physics, this would be very fun.
Sounds great to me.
All right, science, all good.
Brilliant. All right.
Scouting.
Without any further ado, is there a motion for adjournment?
I move that the School Committee adjourns its meeting on Tuesday, February 11th, 2025.
Second. Motion's made and seconded, those in favor? And we're out.
Thank you, everybody.